We need your order. Mr. Black, open the call roll please.
Jeff Mardler.
Here.
Jeff Miley. Here. Lynn Gracie.
Here.
Tom Hanks. Here. Steve Jupp. Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
... United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, universal, Thursday, just as far.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First, we've got the approval of the minutes from the August 22nd and September 14th. Could I get a second please?
One second.
Mrs. Gracie. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Jeff Mardler.
Aye.
Jeff Miley.
Aye.
Lynn Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Hanks.
Aye.
Steve Jupp.
Aye.
And that takes us to special reports, Mr. Gifford.
We have actually, we have a number of... ...involvement in the... ...we have a boosters first, and we also have participation from them. And also, uh, everything.
Okay, um, each year we do our annual recognition of our parent organizations and our support organizations. We ask each group, which I have some attendance here tonight, just to be formally recognized and, you know, to clear up my agenda of their agreements for this year. So I'm gonna go ahead and name off each group. If you're in attendance for that group, if you could just stand up and move, just to be recognized. Uh, for parent organizations, we have AMSCO, the San Antonio Middle School. We have Buckeye Elementary PTA. We have Quiet Seat Head Elementary Community Organization. We have Hill Road Elementary Community Organization. Leroy School Association. The Madison Avenue School Beauty Organization. And the Melrange Elementary PTO. Also, for support organizations, we have the Courtside Club. We have the Riverside Band Boosters. The RBI Club. The Gerd Iron Club. The Riverside Fire Boosters. The Riverside Flying R Booster Club. The Riverside Local Wrestling Club. The Riverside Rebounders. The Riverside Soccer Club. And Riverside Volleyball Boosters. And I think on behalf of the board, we'd just like to thank you for all your support and assistance you give us each and every year.
I would like to also thank all the boosters' parents and all the organization. You carried this district on your back for the past five years due to the funding that we had at your school. And I just wanna thank you for putting this district on your back and taking, taking us forward. If it wasn't for you, our, our athletic programs would have been going downhill. And the boosters tremendous job, and I just wanna say that. Now since Levy has passed, we have a strong budget now, and our forecasts are strong, that you can relax a little bit. You can take some of that weight off your back, and, uh, we're gonna make sure everybody feels...
Echoing your sentiments as well, navigating through the difficult financial situation, it was tough over the past few years. And, uh, a lot of people didn't know that even though it appeared that we had high income participation costs, which we did, it was the boosters that drove those costs down for our students by doing a lot of fundraisers and spending a lot of time doing what they could for all of our students. And now, like you said, we passed Levy in, uh, May, and we're able to bring down those costs. Even though we're not realizing the funding until the end, we're, we're able to bring down those costs for at least, uh, half a year until we receive those funds. And it will remain lower than a lot of area schools, but that wasn't the case over the last couple of years, so thank you for all.
And certainly our parents as well, to some additional funding for provosts and parts and technologies and things like that. And I want to notice to, you know, to parents especially, we've got kids in three, three buildings in the district, and it's been, we appreciate you very much.
Yes, thank you. I would like to call, um, Jacob Bennett to the front. Jacob, I'm gonna put you in a spot, put you right in front of that microphone during your introduction, as you're gonna tell us a little bit about your Eagle Scout project. Riverside Schools would like to congratulate seniors Jacob Bennett, who was recently named Eagle Scout for the Boy Scouts of America. Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable from the Boy Scouts of America. Since 1911, more than 2 million young men have earned the Eagle Scout rank. Among other requirements, there is an extensive service project that the scout plans organize as lead to managers. The project is intended to benefit the scouts' community, any school, or religious institution as well. Eagle Scout also, uh, enlists in the, uh, I'm sorry, Eagle Scouts who enlist in the U.S. armed forces may receive advanced rank in recognition of their achievements. And some colleges and universities scholarships to Eagle Scouts. One thing I always remember people saying is that you can earn an Eagle Scout as a child, although he's not a child, he's a young man. Uh, but it's something you can always put on your resume as a, as an adult. So, uh, Jacob, if you could tell us a little bit about your service project, we'd really like to hear about it.
Alright, so for my Eagle Scout project, I help the local organizations called the Stuff to Your Vision. And, uh, what they do, they're located right down on Route 20th and Perry. And they go out during the winter months and help out the local, I mean, uh, local homeless. And, uh, they focus a lot on homeless veterans. So, uh, during the summer, they raise a lot of supplies for, to hand out, like hats, clothes, coats, um, socks, anything to people. Very good winter. And, um, so what I did, I helped them raise, uh, I believe I raised 1,500 supplies for them. And then a little over 3 grand in cash to, for them to, uh, supply their buses with gas and get them everywhere they need to go during the winter seasons. So, uh, I planned a car wash to help raise cash donations. And then I went to local churches, and they did this thing called Stuff to Bus Events, where we take the bus to a church. And, um, I give a speech at the church the week before, and then we go back the week later and collide supplies that the church brought in. And those, then we pick back to the shop, organize them, and then we go out during the winter season, hand them out. I had a great honor to go on, uh, um, a mission with them during the winter. And what we did, we went down to Cleveland that night, and on our way there, there's a couple homeless men in the village that we stopped, pulled over on the side of the road, and went out, talked to them, see if they needed... They denied it 'cause they just wanna be, um, by themselves, they don't really wanna be part of society whole lot. They just wanna be living on their own, so... But we always leave something with them, so we took them a sleeping bag, a coat, hats, clothes, um, just to keep them warm throughout the, throughout that night. Uh, 'cause a lot of that stuff that they already had is wet, freezing cold, could possibly die. So we go out and help them out. And then on our way out of there, we went into downtown Cleveland to a church that had 50 homeless. Uh, they had actually three homeless veterans, and then everybody else was just homeless. And we helped supply, uh, we actually helped their buses, gave them hats, clothes. So it was a great experience to be part of, and what it got to be the project.
I have one other question for you too. As you're a senior this year, what are your plans for next year?
Uh, I actually am on an internship right now with this HVAC company called Rolo Heating and Heating. They're big commercial HVAC company. And, um, I plan on going on with them next year, working full-time for them, and going to possibly looking at Lake Erie College for business finance, 'cause I'm like to own my own.
I'm sure a lot of people in the future still say, actually, today, yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Plus we have Michelle Walker, Principal of Haddon, to give an update on Haddon Elementary and also our wellness program, uh, program.
Hello. Mrs. Holt. Hi, my name is Michelle Walker, I'm the Principal of Haddon Elementary, and this is my 10th year at Haddon, I'm beginning. My 13th year with the district, and 18th year as an administrator. And I have to say that I am very excited about this school year. Uh, we have a lot of really fun and exciting things planned for our kiddos. And we also have a lot of fun and exciting things planned for our well-being program. I'm gonna go ahead and get started, and then we can kind of run through the slideshow as I finish, if it's up and running. So I'm in charge of our well-being program for the employees, and I've been doing this for the last couple of years with the support of a building representative from every building and, um, organization in our district. And I have to say that this is an incredible program, and I'm very excited about this year. Been able to tweak and change some things, um, to make it more accessible for the employees to get personalized coaching for, with their health and goals, their health goals. And we've put a couple of extra exercise classes in, so on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. We have a Pilates class, and, for 45 minutes. A Pio class on Monday's afternoons. We have, um, a workout class, I'm, I wanted to show you pictures. So, we had a workout class going on at the Fieldhouse, and then we have one right in this very room, right after school, for our high school teachers. So a lot of different options, and we have a few people participating, and I'm hoping that as time progresses, we're gonna have more people involved in that. But it is the very beginning of the school year, so everybody is saturated with making sure that their classrooms are together, they're planning for the instruction for the kids. And one of the last things that people are worried about in the fall is their own personal health and wellness. So we're encouraging people to participate and to try to get more people involved. We have had, um, we did our kickoff with some healthy, um, protein drinks this fall, and we had one-on-one protein drinks. So we fed the kids, or the kids, I'm sorry, we fed the staff, um, Morning Glory drinks, and we had some frozen cauliflower and frozen mango. Mr. Kaelis is kinda looking at me like, "Ohhh", but he did try it. Um, some spinach, laxie, some, all kinds of good things, and some fresh strawberries and avocado, and that was our first shake for the, for the year. Um, many staff members in some of the buildings had spinach salads with the extra spinach. I know the board office, they made some guacamole with some of the guac, and then dipped some veggies in there, and some chips also. And, uh, next month, we are going to have some kind of healthy breakfast bar. And Mrs. O'Neill, Kelsey O'Neill, who is our coach from BDR, is actually gonna make those while she is doing her coaching, because then we'll get more people involved. It's harder for teachers and staff members, even from transportation, to take the time to actually go and make a smoothie with the writing mixes, or to, to take the time to do that for themselves. So I found that if Kelsey goes and makes it for them, people are more apt to try it. Or if I bring it in my container to a meeting and pour it into some cups for some of our district personnel, like Mr. Schlick and Mr. Kaelis, and Mrs. Lanning would drink it. And Mrs. Malakra, they'll try it then. So, um, we're just trying to give everybody some different healthy options to try, just something new to experience. Um, we actually have 41% of ours, our entire staff participating in the program. And last year, we passed out the consortium, I'm sorry, not district, the consortium funded 17, just under $17,000 back to our employees for our incentive program, which is pretty incredible. Employees can learn up to $400 for participating, and they just earn different points for doing different things. So they might earn current points for walking, for going to classes, for journaling what they're eating. So there's a rec, um, for getting CEUs, for doing volunteer activities. And we had five employees that earned the entire $400 last year. And 10 employees that went to coaching with Kelsey over the summer consistently, all summer long, at least once a week. So we are making some progress, and you know, obviously, if you take care of yourselves, then you're gonna feel better, and live longer, and have less ailments as we get older, and our attendance will be better, and we'll be happier. So it's really important that we continue to do that. This year, we're expanding our well-being program, and we're actually going to invite some students to participate, and some sta, other staff members. So Mrs. Gifford, our nutrition, um, director, our food and nutrition director, is working with me to get that together. We're gonna have our very first meeting next week. We have a parent from Haddon participating, and a parent from Lamuth or Riverside. Two of my kiddos that are coming to participate, um, are coming because they are into health and wellness. So I had a conversation with, I'm just gonna say her first name, Ariana, and she is a very young little girl, and she's into dance. So she dances a few times a week, and I asked her, I said, "Why do you like to dance?" She says, "Well, because I love it, and it helps me feel better, I just feel really good when I do it." And she also eats very healthy, so I thought she'd be a great person to have a very good voice for an elementary, um, perspective of what she thinks is important in terms of health and wellness, and some things that we can do. And then I have Austin participating, and he's a runner, and he's in baseball and soccer and some other sports, and also very into taking care of himself and enjoying being physical and eating semi-healthy, as, as he says. So I'm excited that we're gonna be able to do that, we're gonna do some different things, we're gonna, um, look at what we can do as a district, so that the kids can continue to be healthy. In the past, many years ago, we had a committee that we had, um, and our food and nutrition director and I were on that committee, and we did things like said, okay, if possible, have recess before lunch. And we'll let everybody have water bottles, and we'll have a healthy snack for our, um, our parties. We just pivoted having a healthy snack for a big, huge family gathering. We had peanuts, and I let all the families know that we would have peanuts there, and we had carrots and ranch dressing, and they sold really well. So we also had some junk food too, so, and of course popcorn with our famous popcorn machine. So those are some things that we're doing. Um, I'm also trying to reach out to the community for health and wellness, and have been part of the United Way Women's Leadership Council for a number of years. And now, and as a representative of Riverside District, being a principal here. Um, I'm speaking at court for a program called the New Horizons Program, and this is gonna be the second time talking to girls that are incarcerated about health and wellness, and how to choose a different path in their life, and take care of themselves. So this is huge, this is something, maybe get special permission from, uh, the judge, Judge Lawson, to do, and share our entire program with her. So I'm excited that this is gonna be the second time we've done this. And I'm also speaking at the Oak House, um, to women in recovery about health and wellness, um, so trying to spread that around our community. So now, we'll talk about Haddon a little bit. So Haddon, we have some really fun and exciting things happening at Haddon, we've done a lot of great stuff so far. I had a lot of slides that I wanted to show you about our opening, um, days at Haddon. Awesome, fantastic. Sophie. Alright, we're gonna just start at Haddon. We'll skip the well-being program, I think I've talked enough about them. We have a very, we have an amazing staff and amazing parents, and very supportive parents in our, in our building. Brought popsicles to our kiddos today, and water to our teachers, which was so kind of them. Uh, we have a lot of great things happening this year, go ahead and click it once. These are some slides showing what the teachers have prepared for the beginning of the year. And they have really spent a lot of time organizing what they're doing and sharing information with the parents. That middle picture is a picture of Mrs. Krieger's class, and they're doing a get-to-know-you, um, activity at the beginning of the year, and just showing how they're all connected. We have the bucket fillers, um, which is something Mrs. McKnight does with her kids, and just really focuses on positive things that the children are doing. There's a little activity up there, which is we play them, get to know, know each other, and they create little shapes with their play-doh, and wrote about them. And then, um, tell them a little bit about creating those class rules together, and why they're important. Go ahead. Our parents became students at Open House, our teachers did an incredible job preparing presentations to tell the parents about everything that was happening in the classrooms this year, and what to expect, and explaining our schedule rotation. And it was very inviting to the parents, there's just an example of, uh, Mrs. Mackey's welcoming package to the parents, very organized, so the parents knew what to expect, how to contact the teacher, and how to, to reach her. Some other things that, great things that are going on, the top left-hand corner is our technology teacher, and she is teaching kids about how to sign into Google for the very first time. We have a, um, our, all of our new kindergartners got their pictures taken, and their shirts that the board bought for them, they loved them. And I actually see our first graders wearing them on occasion this year, which is very nice. We have a gallery walk happening in the right-hand corner. And Miss Philars is talking about the difference between a fixed mindset and a growth mindset, and has reminders for those kids of what that is. And then we've got our bus safety program. Mrs. Mackey's doing some small group work with her kids on the floor, a lot, our teachers really get involved with the small group activities with our kids. Mrs. Howingsworth up in the left-hand corner is, um, teaching a couple of kiddos, reviewing a math concept with them. Uh, and she always pulls kids to that math table to help them, and also helps them during recess, um, if they need an extra help. Mrs. Malczuski's in the top right-hand corner, and she's teaching the kids about our Lucy Comptons Writing Workshop, any lesson. And we have some kiddos reading in the Philars's class down in the other corner, and, um, in Mrs. Krieger's class, just answering questions about, uh, with their morning routine. The first slide, the little guy down there is in his new art class, which is, um, exciting, the kids are really enjoying art and designing his, uh, landscape. And then we have a science experiment with Mrs. Lahey in the top, uh, left-hand corner. The kids are learning about the scientific method, and Mrs. Krieger's class are learning about language arts, and of course, our kids are on the Chromebooks. Friday night fun, this is something we started last year, and we are continuing this year, so our kids get to come to family movie nights, and they love it. We had an incredible, um, number of families that participated this year. And, uh, Mrs. Miss Simmons brought her popcorn machine, Rosemary, who the kids know very well, and made popcorn, sold popcorn, we sold some healthy snacks, and some not-so-healthy snacks, as we watched movies, and kinda laid on blankets, and I won't ta, I won't mention what the non-healthy snacks were, um, but I had some of them. So we'll be doing this probably four or five times this year. And it's not to make money, it's just to spend time with your family and friends. Subaru went above and beyond again this year, and years past, they've donated school supplies to us, we've been very fortunate for the last couple of years. And this year, they donated 100 books to us, so they went to our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade classrooms, and the library. And actually, just a couple of books went to the fourth grade classroom, it was based on what the reading level was. Our kiddos are learning to conserve energy. We were fortunate enough to have a, um, children's theater came in, and they brought, brought, uh, conservation to life for our kids, and this was something that was sponsored by Burst Energy. So I was able to get this for free, and every parent that signed up got a free kit with a light bulb, nightlight, and some other things. And we chose, or I chose the kids that earned Beaver Awards to actually walk around and turn the lights off at the end of the day and shut down computers. And we just have a couple more slides. Life in the 1800s, as I said, I've been in the district for many years, and I got to experience life in the 1800s for the very first time, uh, by going to Pioneer School with our third graders, and it was quite an incredible experience. Kids got to write on their little chalkboards, and, um, listening to the woman recite the lessons for all the kids was very entertaining. Uh, kids made their own candles and cornbread, just, they had a blast, it was just a lot, a very memorable experience, and I'm glad I was able to participate with that firsthand. This is Mrs. McKnight's project, it's amazing. Uh, she spreads love and kindness throughout the entire community. She had a friend come in and help her have the kiddos paint rocks, love rocks, and then she put them up for Open House, sent them home, and had the parents spread them out through the community, and you're supposed to, um, hopefully, people will find them and, and pass them on to somebody else. But quite an amazing project. And ice cream for breakfast, uh, we do this every year, I think this is our fourth annual ice cream for breakfast. And we do this in honor of all those kids that participated in the World Library Project over the summer. So every, every spring, we tell the kids, if they read over the summer, and they participate in this program, they can have ice cream for breakfast, so it's quite a treat. I enjoy them, this is good. And we have our fifth annual Be a Reader kickoff, we're going to have that in the month of September. We have a lot of fun and exciting things planned for our kids, but I can't tell you about that, 'cause it's top secret information. And we worked with our PTO and our BLT to prepare for that. Our corporate sponsors, some of our corporate sponsors include Farmers Insurance, Classic Lexus, who has purchased book, you know, paid for books for us. Um, we have GMC, Buick, Adventure Subaru, they participate in our Walk to School Day, they let us come over there, and we are doing that next Wednesday. And Adventure Subaru gave us all of those books. So we have an amazing year planned, a lot of really exciting things happening, and we could not do that without the support of our board. Some great, great helpers, so I'm very thankful to them, Joe Rolbeck, and Stephanie Chickenetti, Michelle Crowe, and Tanya Justinger. And there are some of the things that'll come up on the slide that we are going to do this year. Okay, so thank you very much for your time, have a great night.
Thank you, Michelle. A lot of times in our schedule in these presentations, not too many principals want to go, uh, in the first month, because there's a ton of effort going on, and you know, you know, even with the school year. But it's evident that, um, Mrs. Wong, they have a lot to say, especially about our wellness program. And I, I did try the shape, and I think McDonald's has some mark on a cauliflower shape. That concludes our special reports.
Alright, thanks very much. Alright, that takes us to old business, does any, anybody we'd like to discuss? How about new business?
Um, can I just mention that I read an article in the, um, latest edition of School Management News about a board being able, um, that possibly could be more, uh, the Ohio School Association, it's a template, and I was wondering if we could get to that, like, we have to talk about that. So, if I need to...
Um, the other thing I wanted to ask was, when we brought back Lauren, here versus Kate, she's from last... The other thing I wanted to ask was, when we brought back Lauren here versus Skate Nation last year, what sports are not, I know we brought back tennis this year. Is there anything else that has not been restored? Other than some of the middle sports. There are some middle sports, right? Because that's the only one for not, for not brought. Anybody else have anything to do business? All right, that takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. The first one is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. We have not had a meeting yet, but the first meeting is scheduled for October 25th from 6:00 to 7:00. And we'll have to report on that in the November 4th, because that's the day after our trouble. Curriculum programming.
Okay, curriculum programming today, this morning, 7 o'clock, we had a curriculum meeting. Went over the state report card, preliminary of the state report card file of six categories. We did okay. We're going to give a more detailed look next month for the board. But just so you know, in advance, they've already started coming up with strategies to improve our test scores and our curriculum in classrooms. Some programs are already established. There's differentiation going on. And we're working on increasing our student success. So we'll get more details on all of this next month.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. Under your permission, I just want to, to be, you know, we have not an average score. I know some of the problems that we see in the test, test. This board will not accept me as average. One board that is priority large will make sure this alarm is going to take us to 24%. We are going to be exited.
I hear your word, you're safe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, this board will not accept me as average. Average is not something that we all sign up for. And we won't tolerate that. We're looking at excellence. And Mrs. Rocker is going to take us in that direction. She's going to lead us, and I'm confident with that. And there will be more information with that in the next board meeting.
Okay, and for poster group, no meeting since the last meeting we had. So there's a meeting set up for October 18th at 6:30 in the board conference room.
All right, that takes us to the Finance and Audit Committee and Legislative Liaison.
Okay, so we had a Finance and Audit Committee meeting on September 6th at 7:00 AM in the morning. We discussed the permanent appropriations in detail. And we also checked out the update in the permanent improvement funding that we have in the budget in that account. And we, so we had those conversations. And then as far as Legislative Liaison, the only thing I have to report is that there were possible revisions to the Title IX code by the federal government. And as those occur, as a publicly funded organization that we are, we will be looking at what those Title IX revisions would be if they come about. And keep those under advisement and propose a policy here in the district.
Billings and grounds.
We had a Billings and Grounds meeting right before this board meeting. Really recap the beginning of the school year. A lot of work was done over the summer to get the, you know, take care of some of the maintenance issues that accumulated throughout the previous year, took care of them over the summer. The buildings were ready to go. And it was a good start to the year. We're actually already looking at, at winter, we're, you know, at the contract for snowplowing and things like that. So it's a matter of keeping things in progress and ensuring that we have everything in place to keep the buildings going. One of the changes that we've had is we do now have, thanks to the passage of the levy and the thinking of developers who supported us, we do have access to the, for the public, to the fieldhouse. And we are looking to make sure that we properly support that and keep it clean. So there's some other changes that we're looking for there as well. But in the end, we're trying to make sure that we, our facilities are in shape, that they're inviting not only to the students and staff, but that the public can be proud of the new job. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Personnel, Alumni Association.
Personnel meeting, we had a meeting on September 6th. We discussed the hiring of a Transportation Director. As you all know, our Transportation Director, she resigned in the middle of the summer, leaving our Transportation Department a little bit disoriented. Since September 14th, we have since hired Mr. Hoppe, Pat, correct? To be our new Transportation Director going forward. I know there was at the beginning of the year, a lot of problems. I hope that those problems have been resolved by now. I know personally, I went over to, over to where the students receive the bus at, for NDCI. There's two buses that go there and they're not at capacity. And I went on each bus to make sure that the students were safe and that there, there was plenty of room for the students there. I also went over to control. Well, I'm a hybrid patrol. So there was concern about the buses being full overcrowded. I went on both of those buses several times and there's room in those buses. And both of those buses were not filled to capacity. So I didn't see a problem with the busing going to NDCI. I also stopped over while working, while I was employed, to have a patrol up over at Loom, the busing there. That seems to be getting a little bit more organized. I know that some of the elementary schools and the kids were getting home late. I believe that those problems have been corrected now. And if there is, if they're not corrected, then you can contact us to have them. Last, we discussed the review of the Ministry of the Hamilton. We'll discuss that by next month. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Bulle participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. I also need to add to be aware that if you are here directly to comment on the Concord Elementary School site, because of potential litigation, we will not, we'll be happy to listen to the comments, but we will not be responding directly to any comments today. If anyone has a comment, please hit the microphone, introduce yourself. Time is for three minutes, please.
Hello. My name is Richard Byrd. I live at 123967. And I do plan to address the proposed elementary school. I wanted to ask the school board whether plans were to move forward with this elementary school. Now that the Concord Township School Board, zoning appeals has, I have the application for a conditional permit. I would like to encourage the board to consider a different site and also work with Concord Township trustees versus any litigation. Lastly, I would like to officially request all public records, emails, meeting notes, et cetera, in regards to your search and decision process in selecting the school site. I'm especially interested in any recommendations from professional firms the school board hired that evaluated proposed site choices. That's all I had. I also put this request out writing for the school.
Anyone else? That takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Gales.
As the board knows, elaborate with 2016, we did have a bond issue up. Election results for that bond issue was 10,417 for the bond and 8,785 against. Ballot language in this bond issue had the fact that we were going to build two new elementary schools with a waste water treatment plant on site. Election results by precinct are up here. And you're going to find that 54% voted yes and 46% voted no on S District Y. That makes, these results make up the voting public from the smallest portion of Pinzall City, Concord Township, Grand River, Leroy, Pinzall Township, and a small portion of Northern Sherden. In Concord alone, seven out of the nine precincts supported the bond. 4,069 or 53% voted for and 3,650 voted against it. Property prospects, there was some discussion at the zoning meeting about what we did to look for property. And we looked around quite a bit, more seriously with some properties than others. We did start way back, approximately 2009. I'm not even sure if any of the board members were on the board at the time. But we looked at Swatch Lot property that's over in Capitol Parkway area. We were looking at the two buildings that were for sale at the time. One was $3.2 million, one was $2.8 million. With the idea of maybe converting those into smaller schools. It was too expensive at the time. We hadn't passed a bond, we didn't have money in the PI to purchase property. And actually, it was zone industrial at the time. It was too expensive and was geographically inappropriate for us because we were really wanting to find an area that was in the southeastern part of our district. We didn't have water and sewer at the time. We also looked at the current Leroy site. We had a wetland delineation done by a professional company. It suggested that the portion of the property west of location was potentially wetlands. And we're looking at about 13 acres over at Leroy as well. And to build a school on that site would be challenging according to our architects because it's on a plateau, that's a smaller portion of acreage. It's difficult to keep a building running and trying to build another building right next to it. The unfortunate part about Leroy, there's no water or sewer as well. We also considered the Concord Airport. I contacted Mrs. Luda in an email on March 16th, 2016, to inquire about the purchase of 16, 17 acres over there. Mrs. Luda is a great woman. She declined very politely and she wasn't interested in selling any of their property. I know that there was no sewer over there because we were in contact with the sewer utilities. And I'm not sure if there's water because it was a moot point at that point. We also talked to Mr. Van Pelt, Richard Van Pelt, about his property that was located near Roundabout Leroy, just east of it. He was contacted but decided that he'd not want to sell. There was no water or sewer over there as well. We also looked at Concord Cliffs property. And that was located east of Route 608 and Gerbeld intersection, north of Gerbeld. We worked with the owners, Little Mountain Homes, to possibly buy 12 acres. We did have a wetland delineation, a Geotech survey completed in hand of the potential for water, but no sewer. And ultimately, it was too expensive for the 12 acres because the asking price was approximately $990,000. I also contacted Mr. Shafie. The Shafie firm is located at 608 North Summerwood Development. I talked to him on the phone and he did not want to sell the property. He said he was already offered money for his property years ago. And my recollection was it was close to a million dollars from an area developer. And he was not interested in selling it. And he also told me that he didn't think the schools could afford that property at the time. And he was probably right because we hadn't passed a bond yet. So he was definitely not interested in selling the property over there as well. We also looked at the Osborne property located near the corner of Reddinger-Gerbeld Road. We did a wetland delineation, a Geotech survey. There are some wetlands on that property. And the results of the Geotech, the experts, proved that it was very challenging to build a large building on that site. So we conferred with our architects. And they believed that it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get the site ready to build. And we didn't want to spend that kind of money on a property that we had to spend that much money on just to get it up and running. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I had it wrong, my mistake. Osborne also wanted to keep a gas well operational as well as near the center of the property. And it had water and sewer. We also looked at the Lake County GIS system. And while we were using that software, we're trying to find 15 acres of relatively flat property. We decided water and sewer. Some of the properties to find was challenging and some were not for sale. We did notice that a lot of property is owned in Concord by the Metro Parks and Cleveland Natural History Museum. And what we did is we approached the Lake Metro Parks, myself and a couple of board members. We met with Executive Paul Palagia and Deputy Director Vincent Vance to discuss possibilities concerning Lake Metro Park-owned property. They were very helpful talking about some of the property, but they did not release any park-owned property. He did say, Tom, we cheat that, cheat that releasing property from the park system would require an head of God. We also looked at Capitol Parkway one more time. It was suggested by the township. It was too far west, it was too expensive, but it had water and sewer. So we found a property, a proposed property that we're all talking about right now. It's Stern's Little Mountain property. It's relatively flat compared to a lot of other properties in the area. It has approximately 15 acres. It's less expensive to buy a property. Water was available, sewer was not. But we did have meetings with the sewer utilities. And I'd say we had at least two formal meetings. We probably met more than twice, but we had two formal meetings. And the answer from the utilities was that they didn't have capacity to tie in where Summerwood was. We're working off of a 50-year sewer plan, they said. And so we didn't have the ability to tie in sewer. But there wasn't very much wetlands. There was a little portion in the southwest corner. The owner was willing to sell the property and it was the southwest portion of our district. This is our district. The colored areas is our district. The white area in the middle is Pinzall City and Fertile Harbor. As you can see, our elementary schools that are quite old are spread throughout our district. After our first phase of our building plan, our facilities plan, the X's represent schools that will be decommissioned after we build the two new schools. The one on the very top is Hale Road, the X. The one where the X is right here is Madison Elementary School. We are going to decommission that school, but we are going to build on that existing site. That will also have a waste water treatment plan as well because we cannot tie in at that point because there's no capacity in there as well. And although we're taking down Hadon and Hale Road, we figured that there might be more capacity, but they're on different systems compared to where the new schools are going. So if you look at this, this is one of the reasons why we were looking at the southeast corner. If we were looking at Capitol Parkway, we'd be way over here. We would have four elementary schools of one zone, one area. We needed something to serve all of this area, Concord and Leroy. And that is the Stern's property approximately right there. This is the existing Leroy Elementary School. This is Manner. You can see Manner has our school spread out all over the place. And I know some people say, well, we don't want to be Manner, but, you know, more rural area. And I can understand that, I can appreciate it. But understand that when schools build buildings where they find locations, well, they're kind of put them throughout. It's more efficient that way where you don't have to travel to send students across the district to get to elementary schools. The other... The other frame here is Willoughby Eastlake, same thing. Their elementary schools are spread throughout. Back in February 15th, I sent a letter to the Concord trustees, also Kathy Mitchell is the administrator, Heather Freeman. And I'm just going to read the second half of this real quickly. It says, "We are cognizant of the need to apply for a site plan review, however, we do not officially own the property yet nor do we have all the information and details required of the application. We would like to yield to your direction as we do not want to be in possession, or in a position to purchase the property only to find later that we can act through for by Concord Township." Our architects are saying how we can provide some of the details for the site application, but at this time it would be incomplete. "I can also send the township copies of the testing results if necessary. In essence, I'm asking what it is that we can do now to help this process along. Thanks for your time and consideration." And in the first paragraph, we talk about all the different tests that we've done on the property. This was back in February 2017. The response back I received was a day later, February 16th, and it says, "A pre-application conference with your team including but not limited to your engineer, architects to review the site plan review, process, and zoning requirements for locating your school at Concord Township. I can also invite representatives from the other township, county, and state departments that may be involved in this project as well." And it goes on to say on the bottom, "I need you to look at this last, second to last paragraph right here." It says, "I have attached to this email zoning regulations pertaining to the site plan review and conditional use permit requirements, section 13.10. A school requires a conditional use permit to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Also attached to this email is the filing deadlines for both applications." Remember, 13.10. So in the meantime, even before this and after this, we were doing all kinds of tests on the property, even before we owned it, just to make sure that it was appropriate for a building. We had sanitary sewer meetings with utilities, Phase 1 environmental site assessments, preliminary Geotech investigations, biol Geotech, we had traffic impact study, we also had U.S. Fish and Wildlife impact and Indian species, and we also were in contact with the EPA and ODOT. Now, the EPA is the one that controls wastewater treatment plants, not necessarily the township, but it's the Ohio EPA. And ODOT controls traffic. We had a traffic study done as well. So the results of our emails back and forth was we decided to get a bunch of people together and representatives from different organizations, governmental entities. Not only was Riverside Local Schools obviously there and Concord Township representatives, we also had Lake County Engineers Office there, we had Lake County Health Department, Pinzall Water, Concord Fire Department, Icon Construction Management Company that's contracted by our district, Fanning and Howey again contracted, Osborne Engineering, Lake County Soil and Water, and again, Concord Township and Riverside Local Schools representatives. This was April 3rd, 2017. We did give a presentation, we have all the items that were covered, the people that were there. And at the end of the presentation, Mike Myers, representative from Fanning and Howey, asked, "Is there any concern over this property?" And no one expressed a concern. So we go to zoning appeals, go to the Concord Township zoning appeals right here. Now remember, in the email, we talked about 1310. This meeting occurred Wednesday, September 13th to obtain a conditional use permit. Four out of the five members were present, two were alternate representatives. Architects presented the site plan, surrounding neighbors voiced their opposition, and the discussion at that time revolved around section 13, conditional use permit, more specifically 13.05, general standards applicable to all conditional uses. It's very subjective in nature, if you look at it, you'll see what I mean, but one of these 13.05 would be designed, constructed, operated, maintained as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or intended character in a general vicinity and that use will not change the essential character of the same area. What was ironic about this is during this meeting, a lot of people talked about the fear of having to cut down trees to include for the school and some other complaints, which I can understand. There were some trees that were actually Xed out. I think some of the residences that think that we did that for the schools actually, I think it was Little Mountain because Icon, they haven't gone into that, saw any tree jobs and I'm not sure which ones were taken down. But the interesting part about it is if you look at Summerwood and some of the areas around the properties, everyone had this concern about cutting down trees, had no trees on their property to begin with. But as schools coming in, it becomes an issue. Also 1310, like we were told in the email, this is what we concentrated on. Again, little was reviewed concerning 1310 for conditional use for schools. 1310 is specific to schools. If you want, you can see the whole meeting, I think you can get it off of the All Cities Trustees website. All right, in 1310, like we were told that this was the standard by which we can apply for a conditional use permit by the township. Schools are permitted in R1 and residential R4 district. The current zoning areas are four, so we meet that requirement. 1310A, a school shall be located on a parcel containing at least five acres of land and a minimum lot width of 300 feet and set back line. Our lot width is 815 feet and our acreage is 14 acres. We meet that requirement. 13.10B, such uses shall be located on a major street or have direct access to a major street without having to go through a residential neighborhood in order to lessen the impact on residential neighborhood. Well, all our ingress and egress occur on Route 608, State Route. C, no building or portion of the building shall be located closer than 50 feet from a budding property line or public right-of-way sideline. We meet that requirement, our building is much farther than the 50 feet. Also indeed, it says that we can't be, no parking area to be closer than the 50 feet or 25 feet to any public right-of-way. And again, our plan currently satisfies the parking lot requirement to be at least 50 feet from the budding property line. We also plan to fulfill landscape screening requirements also required in this section. 1310B, no access drive should be closer than 25 feet from the budding property line or closer than 100 feet from the intersection of public right-of-ways. Again, we meet that requirement. F, all exterior lighting shall be directed toward the interior of the lot so as to minimize light emissions onto neighboring properties. Well, I can't say that we have that done right now because we have no parking lot, we don't have any lights up, there's nothing there. But our architectural firm has made plans to meet this requirement. All roughed-in areas shall be enclosed, that was in the plans. Also in the plans, was it all play areas shall be enclosed by at least 4 feet? I believe that's also, that is code in, like I said, in Canada, I think it's in some of the other townships that we have. It's in the plans. No schools shall provide dormitory tech dwelling of a temporary or permanent nature. There are no plans for dormitories on this site. In 13J, it says, and this is kind of the catch-all, "If not specifically addressed with this section, all buildings shall conform in all ways with the requirements of the zoning district in which they are located." We have not received any additional requirements, it's said we received a denial of conditional use report. Now, this is a $38.5 million bond that we put up that the public wanted us to build. This right here is the response we got back. It's 10 words, basically saying that we not meet the majority of the standards in section 13.05, although in the email said we needed adhere to 1310. So we don't know which ones we met. We met some of the majority, I suppose, but I'm not sure. So I refer back again to my email. It says again that our, again, our application should be 1310. There's no, there's not even, there's nothing with 13.05 in there, it's 1310. We met all the requirements except the catch-all, I suppose. So we go back to the application. In our application that was filed, we outlined all the reasons why we're conforming with 13.10. Our council reached out to the Township Council to discuss options. The question is, is there any appeal process? We don't even know, we went to the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals to begin with. It's my understanding that in discussions I had, I may be wrong, I don't know, I don't even know if there's appeal process at this point, but it's our understanding that Township Council believes that there is not, only litigation. We don't want to go there, we don't want to go that route. We want to work together, however, we believe that the responsibility is stressful over the majority of voters who supported the bond letting. Ironically, yesterday, I got a letter from the Concord Township that basically says that they're going to defend the Board of Zoning Appeals and if we, they don't want us to litigate, but if we do, they'll defend to the end. And the interesting part about it is, which I think bothered our administration more than anything else, is there's a line in there that says, "Lastly, when your administration chose to proceed with that location, we advise that the conditional use permit should be applied for before exercising any land contract options." That advice was ignored. It wasn't ignored. Back in February, I sent this saying that we didn't want to buy any property until we got direction from the township. And we were led to believe too, that we could not even apply unless we owned the property. The question is, is whether or not a public entity can tell another public entity to, what they can do on property. And there's case law that it says that they can't. The question is though, if this is not a convincing argument for Township to fight, the question is, are they going to fight it in order to delay it? We can't have that happen. It's going to cost taxpayers a lot of money if this project is delayed. Riverside Local School District wants a resolution as well. "We would like to build on the proposed site, be mindful of the neighbors in proximity." In any type of project, we don't want to be adversarial with the people that are in that location. The problem is though, it wasn't an issue until the school's next door to a property. We had meetings, public meetings in every elementary school. I also went around to those coffees, did quite a few of them, and no one in that area seemed to be too concerned until again, it becomes supposed to their property, which I understand, I guess I understand that. But again, with 13.05, these states will not create excessive additional requirements. Basically what it says, it should not cost the community any more money than it needs to be. If this thing is delayed, it's going to cost a lot of money. There's also cooperation from the township to heavily develop commercial property on 44. There's no trees over there, it's cut down, it's heavily developed, but an elementary school is denied? The issue that we have with this is the fact that even after Phase 1, if our enrollment continues the way it's going, there is a possibility that that one's might be decommissioned in the near future. Now, I think that Concord would want an elementary school someplace in their township. You know, we don't want to be adversarial, like I said, in the past, they've been very helpful, easily accessible in the past. We want to keep it that way. Again, what I would suggest that we believe that there's a very convincing case law that's out there and if they believe, if we go that route and they believe that they don't have much of an argument, that I would ask them not to appeal that, not to delay it, let us build the elementary school and serve the children of the district. Here's the reason why we picked Concord. Concord's a great township. It's beautiful. We want to put a good school there, service the kids in the area, just like our other elementary schools, Madison Avenue. It's going to be a beautiful school over there as well. And what we would ask, again, if there's any other resolution other than having us file, then so be it. But at this point, moving this thing is going to be a major disaster. Okay, that was my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kales. That takes us to the treasurer's report, Mr. Mikeo.
We have Ryan Nelson here from Red Tree Investments. We hired Ryan Nelson once we passed our bond issue back in November of 2016. You know, when we issue the bonds, we get those funds upfront and until construction begins, we're not spending those funds. So we hired Ryan as a discretionary investment manager who would help us get as much interest on those funds as possible and Ryan came today to give us an update on our portfolio.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Nelson of Red Tree Investment Group, who serves the district's investment advisor for the bond proceeds. Thank you for having me here tonight, as Gary mentioned, we started working last summer. Tonight, I wanted to give an update on how the bonds are invested and what's going on with the potential earnings for that. I have a brief presentation for you here on page one, it's just a quick reminder of who we are, Red Tree Investment Group. We are an investment advisor that starts public access across the state of Ohio, located in Cincinnati, which happens to be much cooler than this here in Pinzall for some reason. And we manage about $3.3 billion public assets here in the state of Ohio. Page two, just a reminder of types of investment for the street. The district has an investment policy statement and is limited to the types of investments that are under the Ohio Advice Code, various safe and secure types of investments, CDs, government agency securities, and common for paper. On page three, this is a real quick economic commentary over the past year since the bonds have been issued. Actually, interest rates have been on the rise on the short term, so good for you for getting the bonds issued and passed in the bank. So now it's time to make the most time with investments. But actually, short-term rates are about doubled from this time last year, so that will help out with offers for the interest earnings. On page four is the investment activity, just a little review of how the funds came to be. From the discussion here, the letters passed the bond issue of $38.500 last November and Gary and the administration worked with the financial advisors, issued sets of notes, the bond issued. There were two issues of notes, and I don't have to go into why that was done, but it was done for the benefit of the issuance. But there was a $9.5 million note issued in December 2016, there was a $29 million note issued February 2017. Those funds have been invested in U.S. government agency securities, not commercial paper, and CDs. I will tell you this, we are in frequent communication with Gary on the investments. and I will tell you this, we are frequent communication with Gary on the investments and earnings on a lot of different items. We had some odd questions the other day that we were working through as well. So there's constant communication between, between Gary and myself and the rest of the staff back in the office. Just a little bit of what's going on with the funds. Since through August of 31st of 2017, some of the funds have been spent. Of the 2016 series, was about $15,000 spent. And at the 2017 issue, there's been a little over $2 million spent out of the funds. Gary usually contacts us once a month just to shore up the accounts. Gary, your email this week because we're having a bond September 30th to shore up the construction accounts. Where we're at with current investment earnings, to date, there's been about $140,000 in investment earnings. The portfolio combined yield is approximately 1.34% where we're standing here right now. On page five and six is, we've combined the portfolio holdings here for the presentation tonight, just to give you an idea of how the funds are invested. Funds are invested in US government agency securities, CDs, commercial paper. Keep in mind that that holding is a PC on this page are actual investments in the whole district. That's what it's, it's one of the holdings that you listed here. And working with Gary and Gary working with the architects, folks like that, is for us to get an idea of how to place the funds best over the, over the next couple of years. Right now, it's proposed for the district to be elementary schools, all of 19, and I will tell how that happens. On page six, I know Thomas had some questions last year on the commercial paper about the tax of commercial paper that's on the district with them. And here's a listing of the tax of commercial paper. Under the Ohio Advice Code, it does limit the types of issuers that the store street can own, as only the highest quality issuers. Commercial paper, the longest maturity is only nine months, a very short-term investment. However, in today's investment world, it offers the best value. And this is something that we work with Gary quite often. And as you can see here, a lot of the commercial paper matures in a couple of months. We're going to be constantly reinvesting this. And I mentioned that interest rates are on the rise. So we're going to be reinvesting this in a higher investment market. So that will help overall investment earnings forward. And on page seven is some portfolio metrics. At the top is the maturity distribution of all of the holdings that I presented. We have it lathered out in several different securities that mature in the next two years. And what is probably important to you as a school board is what are the expected interest earnings of these funds? Over the next 12 months, the projected earnings are a little over $400,000. And that does not take into account the reinvestment of that commercial paper. That's just an issue. If we come equal that, that's probably another $100,000. So it's not, the monies haven't been earned yet, so it can't necessarily apply it to the project, but it's something that you can look forward to as contingency as to build the schools. So that is where we're at today. Gary does provide a monthly investment report that we put together for him. I believe that goes in the monthly board package, is that correct, Gary? Just to give you an idea, we're rattling a snapshot on each month. As it relates to the investment earnings, it is not a, not a smooth pattern because interest isn't earned until something matures or even settled as. And then the last page, just on the salary. Any questions? I can try it tonight. Thank you very much. I encourage you to, Gary, just inform us, play on with the project so we can certainly, any adjustments portfolio, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
And at that point, that's all I have for my reports.
Thank you. That takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. They were remembering to remove consent agenda items to be discussed and voted on individually. We'll start with finance and audit.
Yes, finance and audit. We have the, sorry, finance. Finance and audit. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items on agenda items A through M.
One second. Is there any discussion? Um, I would like to acknowledge the donations that are listed on here. Again, we have $200 being donated from RLEA, which is our teachers' union, to Riverside 5K. $25 from Joe Henlin Jurzick, I'm sorry if I messed up that last name, to Riverside 5K. And $1,250 from Lisa. Oh my, that kid. Sure, thank you, Lisa. To all the all. Is there any other discussion on items A through M? Yeah? Mr. Mikeo, can we call the roll?
Jeff Hiley.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. That takes us to personnel.
Personnel, second agenda. Motion to approve the items listed on personnel's set agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Items A through H. You have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussions on any?
Linda Gray.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jeff Hiley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Career, Billam, and Programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on correctional programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through C. Can I have a second, please? Second. Thank you. Tom? Any discussion? Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jeff Hiley.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. First reading of new and revised board policies as listed on our agendas or on board docs, depending what you're looking at. Okay, this is just our first reading for that. Okay, thank you.
And then buildings and grounds, please.
Motion to approve item A listed on the business grounds and operations consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. I have a second.
One second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? It's still a roll, yes. All right, Gary, now, if you call the roll, please, Mr. Mikeo.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jeff Hiley.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Motion carried. That takes us to the Board of Education update. Does anyone have any additional updates and more discussion? With that said then, I am going to make my nomination to adjourn to executive session at 8:23 PM, if I can have a moment, please. Thank you, Mrs. Gracie. Mr. Mikeo, can you hold it, please?
This one, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, purchase or sale of property or for compensation, legal counsel, or related to that name or commitment for cash. Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jeff Hiley.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much for coming today.